Testing, testing, testing. Can you hear me? Do you want me to talk? I think we're good now. Can you hear me? Okay.
All right, and we will call our regular council meeting for June 17th, 2025 back to order at 4:15 PM. We are in section five of the agenda this evening, delegations and presentations and item 5.2, the 2025 community grant presentation presented by Lila Mosel. Ms. Mosel.
Hello, thank you. So I'm gonna just quickly go through this nice presentation and then I assume you'll have some questions for me. So I'm Lila Moselle, Chairperson of the Hinton Grant Funding Advisory Committee. Along with me, we had Jace, who's sitting over here, Nicole and Trevor. I will just mention that Nicole was not able to attend the meeting, but she did send her evaluations in beforehand, so she was included in the decision-making process. So the community grant program is for one-time projects, community events, and sometimes operating expenses for new businesses or new nonprofits or initiatives. So our responsibilities as the committee, we review the applicants, we rank them and then provide recommendations to council on how the budget should be spent. So we did try to make the recommendations that reflect the best interest in the community. Here's the evaluation criteria. It's pretty straightforward. I will just note that there was an additional 10 points for any applicant who came and did a 10-minute presentation at the meeting, and all of the applicants did that, so it actually was out of 110 points. So here they are, the applicants and our recommendations. I think maybe to save time, I'll just kind of give you a little summary of our thought process as we were at the meeting and how we came to the recommendations that we did. So firstly, I'll talk about the Hinton and District SPCA. Their project was for installing laundry on the second floor. So currently, they carry laundry up and down the stairs, a million loads of laundry. They asked for a very specific amount of $3,763.17. We gave them that, well, we recommended that, we rounded up. They gave us a very specific amount that they needed with a quote and the actual machines that they want to buy, so we recommended the full amount. Another reason for that was that they were the lowest amount, and they're not even a sixth of the amount that we were working with, which is $26,705. Next, we talked about the two biggest asks. So those were the River Valley Egg Society for Rodeo Kitchen Updates and the Hinton Community Garden Society for the Moline Neighborhood Garden, again, updates and expansion. Both of those requested $10,000, which obviously would be a hefty portion of the amount of money we had to give away. They, interestingly, were actually both of at the bottom of our rating list. And when I say the bottom, they actually, everyone's score is very, very high. We've recognized that all of these organizations have a benefit to the community. But we also thought that we couldn't give them the $10,000, it was too much, so we cut that in half with full confidence that they can do something with that $5,000 that we recommend. Next, we talked about the Historical Society, which is the museum for winter projects. They were actually at the top of our rating system. They requested 5,000, but we only recommended 3,000. Part of our rationale there was that we, in chatting with them, they have other streams of revenue and other donation streams, so. And they also were able to, going to be able to put on all of these projects, which included like events and exhibitions, regardless of whether they got the full amount. Hinton Soccer Society also was one of the higher-ranked ones. They requested $5,000 for storage facility improvements, so they have a little shed and trailer down at Mary Reimer. They're in bad shape. The shed like gets broken into all the time, so it's a security issue. And then it's a safety issue with the trailer getting their mowers and stuff pointed out. So they requested $5,000, we recommended 4,000. And then that leaves us with the Parents for Play Hinton Indoor Playground Operational Funding. So they have received operational funding from the grant committee in the past two years. So this would be year three of three and then no more next year. It's a staple for families with young kids, so they got the rest. Any questions?
Counsel. Counselor Haas.
Thank you. Yeah, on the last one, it's concerning when it's operating budgets for three years, they don't get anymore. So are they prepared for self-sustaining moving forward?
I hope so.
Hope so.
They, they're completely volunteer-run and they have a, they have to keep their membership cheap and their user fees cheap, right? So they do have some fundraising events and they just did well with that Touch a Truck event, which was great to see, but they also have some really important partnerships, like they partner with the Emergency Shelter and like the lactation consultant goes there and holds things. So I don't know, I hope that they are, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, because it is tough, they've struggled through the years and this was, you know, a stable funding for them for three years, but hopefully they can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Chambers.
Thank you, through the mayor. So what, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I struggle a little bit with cat laundry projects when we're looking at such a tiny, a tiny amount of money and, you know, not fully funding things like Hinton Parents for Play, things like that. That's just my, my, it's a hard, it's a tough call, I think, on all those fronts. But do we know, or is it part of the criteria that you ask? You know, if you give the, I'm gonna use as an example, the Hinton Historical Society $3,000 instead of 5,000, are they able to still run that program? Like, do we know that those things are still effective? So that you're, you're understanding that, yeah, can the egg society come up with, are they, is it part of what they put in that they, you know, if you recommend 5,000, that they're gonna be able to find that 5,000? Have those discussions been had during the application and presentation process for consideration? Or do we know that this is gonna help them reach their intended goals, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, so that's a question we ask all the applicants, probably the first question. So, and all of them, they will take what we can get, but they, there is, it's like the rodeo kitchen updates, $5,000 will get them maybe a couple of appliances that they need. It's definitely not going to fund the whole project, right? And same with like the neighborhood garden, it's gonna fund 10 more plots or whatever they were looking for, not 32. So yes, they all will be able to do something, just not their entire projects. And again, yeah, it's a small amount of money that we tried our best to split up barely.
We'll go to Counselor Magoon.
No questions for myself. This is one of those things I try to say every time that we have the, the committee from the grant funding come to us. Thanks for your time. It's a hard decision going through that rubric and that criteria with all the different groups and trying to find a fair and equitable way to divvy up those funds. So thanks for donating your time. Thanks for being part of that process and your recommendations are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosel.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to section six of the agenda this evening, action items. And item 6.1, award the 2025 community grant applicants. Counselor Magoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take the recommended action that council award, pardon me, that I'd like to move, that council award $26,705 for the 2025 community grant program as recommended by the Hinton Grant Funding Advisory Committee as follows. And then if we could have it as listed in the report, inclusive of items one to six, for a total of $26,705.
Thank you, Counselor Magoon. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council award $26,705 for the 2025 community grant program as recommended by the Hinton Grant Funding Advisory Committee as follows. One, Northern Rockies Museum Winter Projects, $3,000. Two, Mary Reimer Rodeo Kitchen Updates, $5,000. Three, Soccer Storage Facility Improvements, $4,000. Four, Moline Community Garden Development, $5,000. Five, SPCA Cat Laundry Project, $3,765. And six, Hinton Parents for Play Operation, Year Three of Three, $5,940, for a total of 2,000, or 26, total of $26,705. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. And once again, I would like to thank the committee for doing the great work of putting that all together for us. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.1 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.2, Regional Assessment Review Board Appointments. That is going to CEO Panasek.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Borbo.
Ms. Borbo.
Good evening. Counsel, we're before you this evening for appointments for the Regional Assessment Review Board. Hinton does maintain a very solid partnership with the municipality of Jasper, Town of Edson, and Improvement District 12, and in doing so, we can spread the work of having the assessment reviews and rotate the necessary positions throughout the year to eliminate it from falling on one municipality always, but also to increase our strength and our knowledge amongst those positions. So this evening, we are looking for an appointment of Lee Beamish from Hinton as the designated chair for the year and for Tricia Papke from Edson as the designated clerk. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Borbo. Counsel? Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move, I'll take option one to start. The council appoint Lee Beamish, Hinton, as the designated chair for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for one term effective July 1st, 2025. If I can quickly speak to it. Lee Beamish has been, I believe, the chair for quite some time now, so she's very familiar with the process and everything. So I appreciate her putting her name forward again and being part of that committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is to counsel point Lee Beamish, Hinton, as the designated chair for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, we have one more recommended action on this item. Counselor Chambers.
I'd like to, excuse me, make the motion that council appoint Tricia Papke Edson as a designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Counsel, the motion on the floor is to counsel appoint Tricia Papke Edson as the designated clerk for the West Yellowhead Regional Assessment Review Board for a one-year term effective July 1st, 2025. And could you push that out again? I don't have it on mine. All right, any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. Okay, let's, let's push that one out one more time and, and see if we can revote that one. Something funky happened, for sure. Something funky happened for sure. All right, well, counsel. If you can, go ahead and vote now. I'm in favor by hand. Race is in favor by hand, Ostaghik's in favor by hand, and Haas is in favor by hand. So that'll be carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.2 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.3 Council Procedure Review Bylaw Number 2003. And this looks like it's going back to Director Borbo.
Uh, through the mayor, actually, this one will be me.
CEO Panasic, you got it.
Thank you. So we are recommending first and second reading to the procedural bylaw number 22003. We have gone out, as we spoke about last committee meeting, to our parliamentarian. He's provided the recommendations. Those have all been incorporated in the document you see here. The only change from the last time that council has reviewed this bylaw is since that date, the FOIP Act has been repealed and there has been two new pieces of legislation that have replaced that. So we have gone through the bylaw and we have changed the references to the FOIP Act to the two, two new acts in its place. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counselor Haas.
Thank you. Uh, just have a quick question administratively is we've gone quite a lot over this, but I only see first and second reading recommended. Any reason why third reading is not recommended this evening?
CEO Panasic.
Through the mayor to members of council, uh, no specific reason. We just put first and second in there. Certainly, if council wants to provide unanimous consent. And third, we could certainly do that as well. We have talked about this at length, but just given the size of this bylaw, we just recommended first and second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counsel, Counselor Haas.
I'd like to move that council gives first reading to Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council gives first reading to Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, Race.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council gives second reading to Council Procedural Bylaw Number 2003.
Thank you, Counsel, Race. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council gives second reading to Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the questions. If you can vote, please vote now. I'll be in favor by hand. Counsel, Ostaghik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, we'll wait till the.
Okay, I thought you might have had a voting.
No, no.
And that motion is carried unanimously. And we will go to Counsel Ostaghik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that council give unanimous consent for third reading of Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003, if I could speak to it.
Go right ahead.
I think this is something that we've been throwing around at length for a long time. I think we've pretty much gotten any feedback that we're going to get on the Council Procedure Bylaw. I don't really see any benefit to postponing third reading. I'd like to move ahead with it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ostaghik. And we'll go to Counselor Haas. But before that, the motion on the floor is that council give unanimous consent to move to third reading of Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003. Counselor Haas.
Yeah, I'll be in support of this. The fact that we also included the contractor parliamentarian a part of this process and then having them also review, you know, an extra part of the contract. I think that, you know, we've come to a place where it is considerably better procedural bylaw, I believe, and it is definitely cleans up a lot of the things that make it made it more lengthy. So, yeah, I'll be in support of unanimous consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council give unanimous consent to move to third reading of Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. If you can vote, please vote now. And I'll be voting in favor by hand. And that is carried unanimously. Excellent. Counsel, Race.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council give third reading to Council Procedure of Bylaw Number 2003. Please speak to it. I am just so grateful that we did hire that parliamentarian to review our Council Procedure of Bylaw. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel, Race. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council gives third reading to Council Procedure Bylaw Number 2003. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.3 on the agenda this evening? Excellent, that was almost two years' worth of work. So good work, counsel and administration on that file. We'll move on to item 6.4, the rescind returning officer appointment. And we'll go to CEO Panasic.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is more just housekeeping. We are recommending that council rescind the appointment of Charlene McDougall as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the general municipal election.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counsel, Counselor Magoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council rescind the appointment of Charlene McDougall as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the town of Hinton General Municipal Election being held on October 20th, 2025.
Thank you, Counselor Magoon. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council rescind the appointment of Charlene McDougall as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the town of Hinton General Municipal Election being held on October 20th, 2025. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And Counselor Ostaghik voting in favor by hand, and that motion will be carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.4 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.5 Appointment of Returning Officers. CEO Panasic.
Thank you, Mayor. We are recommending two motions, one that council appoint Alicia Borbo as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election. And we are also recommending that council appoint Anna Leishmeister. Leishmeister. Leishmaster, okay, I'll get it right one of these days as a substitute plebiscite returning officer and substitute returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. And before I go to counsel for questions, CEO Panasic, can you just confirm previously we had appointed Ms. Borbo as the substitute returning officer for both of these situations? So with these two motions, this person will be made the returning officer. We will appoint a new substitute returning officer. We do not need to rescind the prior appointment to substitute returning officer. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that's correct. We can move, we can simply just move a substitute into the role of the returning, so we don't need to revoke the appointment.
Sounds like a simple promotion to me. Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counselor Ostaghik.
Um, sorry, motion hasn't been made yet, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to move that council appoint Alicia Borbo as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election on October 20th, 2025. And that council appoint Anna Leishmeister as a substitute plebiscite returning officer and substitute returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election on October 20th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ostaghik. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council appoint Alicia Borbo as the plebiscite returning officer and returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election on October 20th, 2025. And the council point Anna Leishmeister as the substitute plebiscite returning officer and substitute returning officer for the plebiscite vote and general municipal election on October 20th, 2025. Let's give that a moment to come up. Counsel, any discussion? All right, counsel, please vote now. And Counselor Magoon is in favor by hand and Counsel Race is in favor by hand. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.5 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.6 Draft Fees, Rates, and Charges Bylaw. CEO Panasic.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll refer this to Ms. Way.
Thank you, CAO. Through to counsel. This matter is returning from last week's committee of the whole meeting, just formalizing previous fees held outside of bylaw by FCSS and rolling into the fees, rate, and charges bylaw. Those are all captured in the draft attachment for you, as well as I did want to draw your attention to one date change that was in error. So that is highlighted on page 67 of the agenda for you. It had previously been listed as September, but needed to be changed to November, just how time works. That's all, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Way. Counsel. Counsel, Chambers.
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to make the motion that council give first reading to fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-3.
Thank you, Counsel, Chambers. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council give first reading to fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-TAC3. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And Ostaghik, Magoon, and Race are all in favor by hand. And that is carried unanimously. Counsel, anyone like to take your crack at second? Thank you. Counselor Haas.
I'd like to move that council give second reading to fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2003, please.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council give second reading to fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-TAC3. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counsel, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, Ostaghik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that council give unanimous consent to move to third reading of fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-3.
Thank you, Counsel, Ostaghik. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council give unanimous consent to move to third reading of fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-TAC3. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. I'll be in favor by hand. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, Race.
To move that council give third reading and enact the fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-3.
Thank you, Counsel, Race. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council give third reading to enact, sorry, the motion on the floor is that council give third reading and enact the fees, rates, and charges bylaw number 2001-TAC3. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 6.6 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.7 Ammonia Ice Plant Funding. And CEO Panasic.
Thank you, Mayor. I will also turn this over to Ms. Way.
Ms. Way.
Thank you, CAO. Counsel will recall during budget that the ice plant project was a noted project. Funding has been allocated or funding has been allocated through the LGFF program to support the bulk of the project. However, we are still seeking grants. We just haven't heard back on those grants yet. We would like to move forward with the project. The RFP is complete. We've selected an appropriate proponent. And in order to ensure that we're not into further delay into the 27, 28 ice season, we would simply like for council to approve $151,000, $151,500 from reserves in the event that we require those funds. So today, we we don't know that we will need them, but rather than further delaying the project and having to come back again, that is the request before you today. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Way. Counselor Haas.
Um, I guess I have one quick question that maybe you can answer it or not, but is this a project that we might be seeing budget changes to to tariffs and things like that potentially, like our last one?
Ms. Way.
Thank you for that question. With this timeline, we will not see any tariffs, which is another reason that is before you today, to ensure that we can lock in the pricing that was originally quoted.
Thank you, Ms. Way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Counselor Haas.
I'd like to move then that council approve the use of $151,500 from the Recreation Center Construction Reserve to account for any non-grant funded portions of the arena ice plant replacement project.
Thank you, Counselor Haas.
I can speak to it.
Counsel, the motion on the floor is that council approve the use of $151,500 from the Recreation Center Construction Reserve to account for any non-grant funded portions of the arena ice plant replacement project. Counsel, Ostaghik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this question's been asked before through the budget process and when we previously discussed the arena ice plant replacement project. But just to refresh my memory, in the event that the rec center, including the arenas, are significantly renovated or reconstructed or new construction, is this ice, will this ice plant be utilized or able to be utilized for renovations or reconstruction?
Ms. Way.
Thank you for that question through to all of council. That is possible, yes.
If I can follow up.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. I was in favor of it before. I just wanted to confirm for sure, though, that this very expensive piece of infrastructure could be used moving forward for new ice, new facility, renovated facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Ostaghik. Counsel, Race.
Thank you, sir. So if this $151,000 is not covered by a grant and we have to use it from the rec center reserve, will that money be replaced into the reserve at a future budget?
Ms. Way.
Thank you for that, Counsel, Race. The allocation of funds into that reserve is at the will of council through each budget process, so that'll actually be up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Way. Counsel, Race, would you like to follow up?
Hey, you're asking us to give $151,000 to this project? And if we want to put that $151,000 back in, we make that decision?
CEO Panasic.
Uh, through the mayor, if I could. So administration doesn't have any plans to replenish the 151 plus an additional 250. We allocate through through a council motion, we allocate, I think it's $249,000 per year. So we'll continue to make that that allocation. But we weren't planning on adding the 151 for the next budget season.
Counsel, Race, can you turn your microphone on, please? Okay. Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counsel, Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, along those lines, because I I have a feeling, because it, because of the name of it, there's going to be some question as to, is this really going to construction or is this going to our current facility and maintenance of it? But was there any other reserves looked at, obviously, and I'm certain the answer is yes, by administration, that could have also potentially funded this?
Ms. Way.
Thank you for that question, Counsel, Haas. If you look into the report, option two highlights that the funds could also come from the facility's components reserve, should you not want to use the rec reserve.
And what amount is in that particular, if I may follow up on on option two? What is in that?
Ms. Way.
I would have to go to Director Borbo, who may have it handy. She's looking for it right now.
Director Borbo, we'll give you a minute.
Through the mayor. CEO Panasic. $608,694.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. That was $608,694 currently remains in the facility's components reserve. According to the report, the Recreation Center Construction Reserve holds a current balance of $1,497,467.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
So option two, with that 600 and some thousand in reserve, what is that slated for in future projects or anything like that?
Ms. Way.
Thank you for that question. Items from that reserve are largely related to the works of Mr. McLaughlin and Infrastructure Services. I'm not sure what you had, if you had anything for those. These funds were identified through corporate services as available for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Way. Councillor Haas for the follow up.
I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you, councillor Haas. Councillor Magoon.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm really good with this because at the end of the day, you know, councillor Ostasik asked, I think, the most pertinent question. Once this is built and once it's on site, can it serve a function in a future facility or a rehab facility? The answer is yes. So because of our grant funding well done, the bulk of the cost has already been paid for. So really, what you're saying is for the for the almighty cost of $151,000, you can have a piece of capital equipment worth $1.7 million. Yep, really okay with that. If that's what it costs us going over, that sounds like a deal to me if we have to do it. So yeah, no, I'm perfectly good with this and I think it's coming from the right fund. So there we go.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. Councillor, the motion on the floor is that council approve the use of $151,500 from the Recreation Centre Construction Reserve to account for any non-grant funded portions of the arena ice plant replacement project. Councillor Race.
Uh, I do have to say I won't support this. I know back in our first term, we were the first council to to make a motion to set money aside for the rec center construction. And money has been taken out during COVID. Money was borrowed. I don't know how much money was put back. I, if there's other money available, I would rather use that rather than touch this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Race. Councillor Magoon.
I guess to councillor Race's comment, it's being used to build for the future of the rec center. It's an ice plant that can be used in a future rec center, whether it's a new rec center, whether it's a rehab rec center. That's exactly what it's being used for. So it's, again, I guess I don't see what the concern is because that is exactly what that money was put aside for. The question is whether you put it into the facility now or later, it's the same end use. And admin had just clarified that it could even be transported offsite to a new build, so.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. And just something you mentioned makes me want to follow up with administration. You mentioned in the facility. From my recollection from our budget discussions, this ice plant is an external ice plant, one of the new hyper efficient models. Is that correct?
That's correct. It will be an external unit. It's not the skid unit we discussed. However, it is external to the Recreation Center, making it safer and more practical for use as well.
Thank you, Ms. Way. Councillor Race.
You know what? I hear what Ryan is saying. I do. But when we hit the ground and we get working on that rec center and we decide we're going to build, we're going to do something, I'd like to have $2 million sitting there in seed money to get us going. I don't want to keep borrowing from this account, so I still won't support it.
Thank you, councillor Race. And in my role as the chair of this meeting, councillor Race, if you're uncomfortable with the source of funds, this would be the time to suggest an amendment to amend the source of funds in the existing motion. If you were of that interest. Yes, and councillor Race, when you've completed your thinking and you're ready, we'll cue your microphone and you can do it for real. Thank you. Councillor Race.
So my amendment would be, um, starting at recreation, we'll take out Recreation Centre Construction Reserve and put in Facilities Components Reserve.
So for the secretary to change the Recreation Centre Construction Reserve to Facilities Components Reserve would be the amendment. And councillor Race, does that wording look right to you?
Yes, and here, I just want to be clear. I realize that, you know, you know, building this, it's going to move along with us into the future. It's not something that, you know, we'll spend money on today and we won't utilize later on. I'm just not one for borrowing money from an area that we are specifically saving for. And that may not make sense to people, but to me it does. There's money here available to us and that's where I'd like to get the money.
Thank you, councillor Race. Councillor, the motion on the floor is an amendment to the main motion that changes the reserve to the Facilities Components Reserve. So if this amendment were to pass, the motion would read that council approves the use of $151,500 from the Facilities Components Reserve to account for any non-grant funded portions of the arena ice plant replacement project. We'll go to councillor Magoon.
Yeah, I just, I'm not supportive of it that, at the end of the day, here's the other consideration. The money that is spent on this $1.7 million piece of equipment now is money that you don't have to spend out of that same fund later. Instead, though, if you, if you draw 100 and whatever it is, $151,000 out of another fund, then later on, out of this same fund, you're going to have to pay more for that unit at the end of the day. So again, it's just, you're this is exactly what the construction reserve account is pegged for, is building the rec center. This is part of the rec center. And so if you take it out of a different account, you're actually drawing down that account for something it wasn't intended for. So when you're talking about building the rec center now, or 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, that is exactly what the construction reserve account, we're not borrowing money and it's not going into the rec center. We're starting that construction early on this piece of equipment. So that's, again, it just fully won't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. Councillor Ostasik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also won't be supporting the proposed amendment. I think the original motion is the right place to take this $151,000 from. It is new construction that contributes towards a future renovated recreation center. We're just, we're doing it now instead of, you know, whenever the rest of the Recreation Center renovation project gets approved. And it's, it's been confirmed, again, I will reiterate that in the event that a new recreation center is greenfield constructed, some other location, this ice plant can go there. It's $2 million less that we have to, sorry, 1.7 today, but probably two, maybe two and a half, maybe more at some point in the future that we have to spend when it comes to the day that we do the Recreation Center renovation. In addition to which, I don't agree that we remove that from the Facilities Components Reserve because I haven't heard from administration on what that money that's in the Facilities Components Reserve is currently earmarked for. I'm more comfortable taking it from the Recreation Center Construction Reserve because I feel that is exactly the intent, the purpose and the reason that we set that that fund up in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ostasik. We're going to go to councillor Race.
Uh, thank you, sir. So my question was to administration, what do you use the Facility Components Reserve for?
CEO Panasek, would you like to take that one? Ms. Borbeau, perhaps?
Sorry, I'm learning that my enlarged screen is not my friend in council meetings. Just bear with me. In 2025, projects identified to come from the Facilities Construction Reserve in part, so not all of them because we had some grant funding to offset some of them, but some work on the Bill Thompson Arena Boiler. The golf course HVAC system was going to be coming from those funds. Portion of the building management system and heaters in both these, the Hotchkiss and the Bill Thompson Arenas. So that was what was identified during, during the 2025 budget process.
Ms. Borbeau, that sounds like there's some Recreation Center components included in there. But it also sounds like, if I'm remembering the numbers correctly from budget, that's pretty close to the full $608,000 amount. Can you confirm if there is, with those planned projects, 151,000 remaining in that reserve?
Due to all of council, we're very close. My reconciliation now doesn't, that I'm looking at today, doesn't include the final MSI fundings, which we're just working on the project plans and completions. We will be very, very close. But I don't see it being overdrawn and we do have the ability with the remaining MSI that we could offset the differences, but it would, taking it from the Facilities Component Reserve, this additional 151,000 would potentially draw it down to close to zero.
Thank you, Director Borbeau. Councillor Race, did you have any follow up to that?
You know, I think that's really important information to know. So I'm saying let's go to the Facilities Component Reserve. And now I hear that, you know, we have, I don't know, five or six other things coming out of that reserve that may drop that down to pretty close to zero. I didn't know that five minutes ago. You know what my, my big issue is, and maybe I'm seeing this differently than anybody else, is we have a fund, we established that in our first term, first council to ever put money aside for the rec center and I hate dipping into it. And I hear what you guys are saying, that we're not dipping into it because, you know, this will follow the new rec center. I'm going to stay with my amendment.
Thank you, councillor Race. Councillor Haas.
Yeah, all my questions, I guess, have been answered. That was my, my main concern was taking it from facilities, not knowing what was already coming out of that, but now hearing what I've heard, I'm not going to be supporting this. Those projects are important as well. We know where this is coming from. We also have the ability, we are still waiting on grants, so this money may not come from this fund at all. You know, if there's an appetite as well during our budget discussion, the council of the day may consider, okay, let's replace that money through the budget process as well. So I'm comfortable with it coming from where it is. I had the same thoughts originally as councillor Race is having currently right now, but based on what I've heard and based on what administration's reported on that facilities reserve, I'm going to vote against this and I think the Recreation Center Construction Reserve is the right place for it to come from. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haas. Councillor, the motion on the floor is an amendment to the main motion that changes the Recreation Center Construction Reserve to Facilities Components Reserve. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing nothing, council, we will call the question on the amendment only. We're voting on the amendment. Let's see if this comes up for us all. Okay, council, the motion on the floor is an amendment that will change the wording of the motion to read Facilities Component Reserve. Council, please vote now. Councillor Race voting in favor by hand. And that motion is not captured correctly on anybody's screens. Maybe we can re-push that one for another vote, please. Once again, council, we're voting on the amendment. Council, please vote now. Okay, and that motion is defeated with councillor Race and Mayor Nissan voting in favor. That will put the main motion back on the floor. So council, the motion on the floor is that council approve the use of $151,500 from the Recreation Centre Construction Reserve to account for any non-grant funded portions of the arena ice plant replacement project. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Councillors, please vote now. Councillor Chamber in favor by hand. And councillor Race in favor, I think you already voted actually electronically. That is carried unanimously. Okay, council, is there anything further for item 6.7 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 6.8, Alberta Municipalities Resolution, Childcare and CEO Panasek.
Thank you, Mayor, through to members of council. So we're here today at the last committee meeting. Committee had directed us to look at the potential, potential resolution for the affordability grant for childcare. So that's before you today. We've done a little bit more digging into the topic that we had discussed last week. Really, the crux of the issue is in the last few paragraphs on page 83. But there is a maximum number of for-profit childcare spaces eligible for affordability funding. On May 15th, our, a local for-profit registered daycare was informed that it was unlikely that they would receive this funding as they were not considered to be in the final stages of their licensing process despite being in the, only requiring the final inspections. And the town of Hinton is not considered a long waitlist community, which were limited to Grand Prairie, Red Deer, Lethbridge, or McMurray and Canmore Banff. So based on the new criteria that was coming up, not-for-profit registered daycares are not subject to the same cap. But for-profit registered daycares are. So based on the new criteria, we do have local entrepreneurs that are likely to be ineligible for the affordability grant. The, the real impacts would be the pricing to parents with, with the affordability grant that comes out to a standardized flat rate of about $326.25 per child per month. Without the affordability grant, childcare spaces are typically upwards of $1,000 per month per child. So if there's any questions on this report, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, CEO Panasek. While we're waiting for council to decide if there's any questions, CEO Panasek, I understood that you also reached out to Alberta munis to look at potential seconding of, of some of these resolutions and that there were in fact no resolutions waiting on seconders?
Through the mayor to members of council, there was possibly, I believe it was the Village of Nanton. So they were going to pass our information along to get in touch with us directly, but that hasn't happened yet. So we are, you know, we'll say on the list with Alberta municipalities that they know if there's any communities that are outside of our population range looking for a second, or they'll submit that to us, but as of right now, we don't have anything.
Thank you, CEO Panasek. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the council direct administration to develop an Alberta municipalities resolution on increasing eligibility and funding for Alberta affordability grant for registered daycares for 2025 convention, if I can speak to it.
Go ahead.
I appreciate administration digging into this. It seems pretty lopsided, unfair to those that want to start up a business and, and as you stated, may not be so unfair to the business owner, but definitely unfair to the parents that have to pay the fees. So I think that we need some advocacy here to the province to reconsider what those eligibility and funding criteria are. I do have one quick question, I guess, as you were discussing that or sharing that information, though. The federal government offered Um, the federal government offers some subsidy to uh, childcare as well. So those parents that if this, you know, this, this eligibility isn't uh, uh, they're not able to, but go forward with, are they, are the parents able to um, apply for any federal subsidies for grant or for childcare?
CEO Panasek.
Thank you, uh, through the mayor to members of council. My understanding of the um, the early learning and childcare agreement and the affordability grant is that is a replacement for all of the old subsidies that, that used to be on a sliding scale based on income. And they've come out with this funding through the federal government, applied for by the provinces um, in order to standardize the, uh, the cost of daycare for parents. So I believe that all of those subsidies are now gone. So this is really the only subsidy that's applicable in Alberta now.
Thank you, and thank you for that information. So that even uh, uh, supports this moving forward even, even more that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haas. Uh, council, I'll remind you that there's currently no motion on the floor. Oh, yeah, sorry, you did. I'm looking at right there. Uh, sorry. Council, the motion on the floor is that council direct administration to develop an Alberta municipalities resolution on increased eligibility and funding for the Alberta affordability grant for registered daycares for the twenty twenty five convention. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Councillors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Council, is there anything further for item six point eight on the agenda this evening? Councillor Haas.
I just have a quick question. Uh, we, we did have the resolution on the um, lumber. Do we know if that's still something that is the Americans are considering or like, there's been a lot of back and forth around tariffs and things like that since we first, this was brought to us and we made that? Is this still something that, I guess, is, is reasonable to move forward with, or is that something that our council is still uh, interested in, I guess? So uh, is it something that's still possible for that industry, uh, with everything changing or everything going on with tariffs?
CEO Panasek.
Through the mayor to members of council, I, I don't know all the statuses because that presentation did have about six different advocacy recommendations through it. So I don't know the status of all of them and I'm sure, you know, that environment is moving very quickly. I'm sure it has changed, but I'm, you know, my uh, I would imagine that most of those uh, recommendations are still um, still relevant today.
Okay.
But I, I would have to confirm with that, that specific group.
Is that part of, if we leave it on the books, are, are you planning to do that before delving too much into the resolution? Uh, is that the plan from administration?
Uh, through the mayor to members of council, we, we don't have a plan to bring forward a resolution without a council motion. The motion that we made prior at regular council was to consider bringing it forward to the spring, the spring resolution. We weren't able to do it, but we did bring it forward at the last committee meeting for consideration for, for the fall meeting. But we don't have a resolu-, or we don't have a motion of council supporting us developing that resolution.
Okay, my apologies. I thought, I didn't realize that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, CEO Panasek. Thank you, councillor Haas. Council, is there anything further for item six point eight on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item six point nine. Uh, co-op housing development, and this is a notice of motion from councillor Race. So councillor Race, I will allow you to read your motion into the minutes. Councillor Race.
Thank you, sir, very much. I move that council direct administration to bring back a report on the potential of co-op, co-op housing development in Hinton to a future committee of the whole meeting. And if I may
Go ahead.
Speak to it. Uh, I feel it's important to be aware of all the options available to get people into homes. Co-op housing is a model used in larger centers. I know Vancouver, larger cities like that have co-ops. I believe um, municipality of Jasper has co-ops there. I um, also, I don't know if it was COVID that caused our, our housing concerns, if it was the short-term rentals, if it was a increase of population in Canada, I don't know what it was. But I do know we've got an issue with housing and should an opportunity arise where co-op housing could benefit our community, I'd like to be ready. So I hope I get the support of council on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Race. Councillor Magoon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for administration. Would this, I mean, in my head it would, but I'd like to ask the question. Would this fit uh, into future housing discussions, strategies that are going to be coming back to council? If it was the will of council?
CEO Panasek.
Through the mayor to members of council, yes, actually this, you know, we, we are already looking at this as a part of our Bhutan senior development. So, you know, I, I see this as still as a separate report because there's some nuances of what we're doing with the senior realm, uh, but a lot of the information will be the same. And I think we can, uh, you know, we can bring that alongside it and use that information from one for the other, with just maybe some specific nuances around, you know, you know, possible municipal involvement or um, you know, maybe locations, you know, other nuances that wouldn't be included in the seniors' report, but I think a lot of the information will be there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. Council, the motion on the floor is that council direct administration to bring back a report on the potential of co-op housing development in Hinton to a future committee of the whole meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Councillors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. I have a question for CEO Panasek. This uh, motion lines up probably fairly well with all of the recent federal announcements on housing. Um, but given the fact that we do have a new federal government, there are lots of uh, funding announcements without a lot of details. Uh, does administration require anything from council to keep an eye on those federal programs so that we can uh, be prepared when the funding does start coming down the pipe?
Through the mayor members of council, uh, no, at this point in time, nothing from council. That is something that we're continually keeping an eye on um, as it relates to some of the projects that we're looking at. So as of right now, no, um, you know, as those programs are further built out, we'll have a little bit more to work with and a little bit more to talk to council about, but I don't think anything at this point.
Thank you, CEO Panasek. Councillor Race.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So CAO, the, the um, accelerator housing from the federal government, is that part of the twenty-five billion dollars announcement for housing?
CEO Panasek, can you answer that one yet?
Through the mayor, I cannot. Um, either one of the members on council may or uh, Mr. Rousseau.
Mr. Rousseau.
Changeable things happen. So that will check and verify when we come back with our report where that sits.
Thank you, Mr. Rousseau. And for those on the recording, Mr. Rousseau explained that the details of the federal funding announcements are not yet available to us. Councillor Race, did you have any follow up? Thank you, councillor Race. Councillor Haas.
Yeah, I, I have a question for administration around federal funding because this would be, you know, we, we dodge the new provincial requirement of federal funding going through them, uh, through our tiny homes. Um, but this would be potentially one of the first times that we'd have to go through that process. I, i- is administration at all aware of what that process looks like? Like if we apply for the federal funding, then we have to go through the province? And then it's through, are you aware of how and is there a plan to maybe help council also understand what that process is? Because it means a lot. Uh, if it's a lot of work, this is a, a big conversation to have as to do we want to go through those dollars, go through, put administration through that work? So is administration at all uh, prepared or planning to maybe go over some of that with council to help us understand that process?
CEO Panasek.
Uh, thank you through the mayor to members of council. Uh, we have already gone through the process and uh, a number of times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, it, it wasn't acted just recently, but we do have, you know, especially just recently, we've gotten quite a few, uh, quite a few grants. Um, one we submitted, we have to submit all agreements regardless of eligibility or whether um, you can get an exemption on it. So one we had was a grant through FCM. Um, they just said, thank you very much. Um, you're good to go, but all of the agreements through FCM are not uh, subject or uh, really further review, but you still have to send them. And we had another federal agreement. Um, I can't remember what it was, but we sent it to them. We got a relatively quick response back. I think the provincial priorities act, where you're going to run into trouble is when there's a conflict in the, the policy of the federal and the provincial government. So if we are applying for something that we believe could be in conflict, we'll probably submit that even before the grant. So we have our answer in, you know, beforehand. Uh, we don't want to have to wait until we go through the grant process and all the planning that goes along with it to, to find out that, you know, they don't, they don't agree to whatever policy or agreement that we have in place. So we, we are working through it, but it's primarily an administrative policy and I, I, as of right now, there's not a lot of concern on my end that a lot of agreements are going to be turned back, but I think that this was something that they put in place just in case, but I imagine funding for housing is pretty well aligned between provincial and federal governments.
No, that's perfect. I appreciate that. It, it sounds not as complicated as it may have seemed and, but obviously if it's in contradictory to priorities. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haas. Council, is there anything further for item six point nine on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to section seven correspondence. Councillor Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the council, except uh, this week's correspondence for information.
Thank you, councillor Stasich. Council, the motion on the floor is that council accept the correspondence package for information. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, councillors, please vote now. I will be voting in favor by hand. Thank you. And that motion is carried unanimously. That will take us to section eight of the agenda this evening, notices of motion. CEO Panasek, are there any notices of motion this evening?
Through the mayor, no, they're not.
You, CEO Panasek. That will take us to section nine, reporting and nine point one, council reports. We'll start with councillor Stasich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report this week.
Thank you, councillor Stasich. Councillor Magoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report.
Thank you, councillor Magoon. Councillor Haas.
Thank you. Uh, just one quick thing. Uh, I had a, a library board meeting last night. It'll be our last uh, until next September, uh, or this coming September because uh, it is the holiday. Um, we are, have to, uh, our chairs in the public area, computer area need replacing. So we uh, okayed that last night, uh, to move forward in, in purchasing those. Um, and we're also, uh, there'll be a letter going to someone requesting, there was a great deal of uh, time and effort put into a fundraiser by the Friends of the Library at the library selling books and uh, it did very well. So we're going to be asking uh, the Friends of the Library to uh, buy us at the library, uh, another 3D printer. Um, so we will, hopefully, they will accept that and we can have a 3D printer down there again. So they were much cheaper than they used to be, uh, when uh, we first got one. And I believe the one that we got or getting, would be getting, it's an industrial grade one, so it won't start smoking after a year or two. So because the other one just kind of, yeah, cropped out. So anyway, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haas. Councillor Chambers.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chambers. Councillor Race.
Thank you. Um, I do have a meeting with Community Futures West Yellowhead on Thursday, and I believe we'll be traveling to Jasper for that board meeting, and that's it.
Thank you, councillor Race. And for myself reporting, uh, last week was a, a great opportunity to celebrate our youth here in Hinton. Uh, Father Gerard Redmond had their arts night, a showcase of the artistic talents of all of their students. And what an amazing night that that was. I highly recommend anyone go out uh, next year when they do that in the spring. Uh, they showcase all of the visual arts, culinary arts, uh, musical arts, you name it. Uh, it's a really fun night and great showcase for the kids. I also want to uh, send out a congratulations to the two, twenty-six thirty-eight Hinton Royal Canadian Army Cadet Corps. I attended their annual cadet review uh, last week and they were presented with the award for the best cadet corpse in the province. Uh, so congratulations to the twenty-six thirty-eight Hinton Royal Canadian Army Cadet Corps. Uh, they did get a trophy or a plaque that was about the size of councillor Chambers. And that is all I have for reporting this evening. We'll go to CEO Panasek for chief administrative officer reporting.
Thank you, mayor. Nothing to report.
Thank you, CEO Panasek. That will take us to section ten of our agenda this evening. We do have a closed session item for mutual performance. Uh, there's a holdover from last week when we ran out of time. Councillor Haas.
We'll be going to closed session, please.
Thank you, councillor Haas. Council, the motion on the floor is that council move into closed session at five twenty-five PM. And as soon as it's up, we'll call the question. Okay, council, go ahead and vote now. That motion is carried unanimously. We are in closed session. Thank you, everybody.